Call the meeting to order. I invite you to join us with the Budget of Allegiance. Roll call.
Colpak, here. Pepcorn?
Here.
Preston?
Here.
Strand?
Here.
Mahoney?
Here.
Library, as always, is busy. Registration is now open for the first year-long reading challenge for adults and older teens. There will be 12 different prompts for books to read, and any participant who competes with at least 10 of the 12 prompts will be entered into a prize drawing at the end of the year. Kids ages 12 and younger can create a Lego masterpiece for the annual Lego Mania Design Contest. The kids can build their own original creation at home and bring it to the downtime library for judging on December 27th. Prizes will be awarded in several categories, and pre-registration is required. Beginner yoga for adults will be held December 28th and January 4th at 6:00 PM at the Carlson Library. Other. All of us as Team Fargo want to wish you and your loved ones a safe and happy holiday season. The residents, visitors, and businesses are our greatest gift and truly make Fargo far more. We have a short video message for everyone from many of our employees at the city of Fargo. Looks like Ben's got the biggest apartment. Holy cow. Is there a motion to approve of the order of agenda?
I say move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the December 11th, 2023 regular meeting?
Move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda items 1 through 42?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Preston?
Aye.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Colpak?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Apparently, nobody wanted to come out on the holiday and speak to us tonight, so we will have to go to our non-public hearing, which will be... Presentation by the Fargo Fire Department on its 2024 through 2029 strategic plan. Chief Sturridge-Durksen to explain.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. It's good to be here. Happy Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to you. Glad to see all of you here tonight. Tonight, I want to just bring in front of you the Fargo Fire Department strategic plan for 2024 to 2029. Back in May, we began the process of working through this. This actually goes back a few months earlier when we hired a consultant to help us work through that and help develop this, help us build a plan to make sure that we're engaging with our community stakeholders. So, we began the official process of the strategic plan on May 8th, where we invited 70 members of the community to come and join us. We actually had 40 that showed up, and they worked through various projects, spent about two hours with us, helping us develop what priorities they wanted to see the Fargo Fire Department work on over the next five years. So, we worked through a couple of different exercises. We had folks from the community, we had other city departments, we had neighboring fire and police departments, Sheriff's Office. We're all part of this external stakeholder group. And they ranked in importance the 10 programs that we provide or services that are provided by the Fire Department. And they gave us an order, and this is the order of priority that the community talked to us about, that they wanted us to be the best in fire suppression, followed by EMS, and then technical rescue. And technical rescue has a lot of different components with that. That goes to vehicle extrication, it's trench rescue, it's high-angle rescue, it's water rescue, it's all those different things. Hazardous materials mitigation next, and then our fire prevention programs, emergency management, fire investigations, our public fire and life safety education, as well as our UAS program, otherwise known as the drone program, and then finally, wildland fire services. So then, following that day, we had our internal stakeholder group. We had 33 members of the Fire Department that met for three days and worked on taking the information that was there and presented by the community stakeholders. And they reviewed our organizational chart, our mission statement, vision statement, department values, and the priorities set forth by the community stakeholders. The team utilized a strategic environmental analytics method known as SOAR, so we looked at the strengths, opportunities, aspirations, where do we want to be at the end of this strategic plan? What kind of things do we want to be doing? And what are the results that we're really looking for from the different services that we provide as a community? The team worked through this. Previously, we had five goals. They knocked one out. They felt that one could be combined, and so we came up with these five goals, and we'll just go through them real quickly individually. So, the first goal is safeguard the community through proactive prevention, preparedness, and public education programs. We know that dollars invested in prevention are way better than dollars invested in response. So, our goal is really to have that community and put the programs and services in place that really prevent people from having emergencies. Didn't happen yesterday when we had 65 responses on Christmas Day for various different things. Weather causes those kind of issues. But then they also looked at in the goal of different objectives that we needed to look at. Objective number one with that would be to enhance our communication and utilizing our comms team to better get our message out to the community and even within our department. The next objective is to ensure that we're adopting the most current versions of the fire code. That's incredibly important to us, and I think as we work on the next code, that'll be coming next year, the 2024 International Fire Code, Building Code, Residential Electric, as we bring that whole process into forbearance next year, there will be some things in there that we're going to push pretty hard on for the safety of our community. And then the third objective is to maintain and update the local emergency operational and all hazards plan for the city of Fargo. That's the charge to us under emergency management, and so we want to make sure that every department within the city is well-equipped to maintain and work when we need to during an emergency. The second goal that we have is to ensure systems and processes are in place to minimize the impact on life and property for medical, fire, disaster, and other emergencies. And they came up with four objectives here for us to look at, determine alternative response models. By far, medical responses are our biggest number of responses within the community, and we have the wide range. We have from a stubbed toe to cardiac arrest. So, we have and everything in between, and trying to look at that and what's the best way to respond to some of these. Some of those are calls that don't need that response quickly. They're really not an emergency, but they do require some medical attention. Is there something, an alternative response model that we can look at? So, that's one of the things we want to look forward to, look into a little bit more and gather some of that data, and probably take some of that pressure off our folks. Objective number two, review alternative response models for fire response. Is there something different out there that we can do better? Don't know what that is, but it's one of those things that if we're going to continually improve, let's continue to look at these things that are out there. The third objective is review our specialty team model. Is there a way that we can leverage partnerships with other emergency response groups within Cass and Clay County that we don't have to bear the brunt of all of the training and everything that goes along with that? Can we utilize other resources from the state, other fire departments and police departments, and even EMS departments within the region? And then finally, the last objective is develop a mobile integrated health program. That's a model that's really starting to be seen throughout the community, or throughout the country, actually. Some places have been well-established for a number of years. Again, but this is one where we don't want a mission creep, but we're also involved in this in a significant way through emergency response. And is there a model? Is it through the Fire Department? Is it through public health? And how do we do that? But if we don't look at it, we're not going to come up with a solution. So, that's one of the things that we want to look at in the next five years, is how can we do this? Goal three, recruit, develop, retain the highest-quality team members, and implement a comprehensive training program that provides for continuous education, preparedness, and opportunities for all of our personnel. So, the first objective is really an easy one. We should have that one accomplished next year, so we'll have that taken care of with staffing of Fire Station 8. But it's in the years of the plan, so we had to put it in there. Then, objective number two is determine staffing needs for the Training Division. As we continue to change the type of training that we have and have it more specialized, how do we need to staff that division? What do we need for instructors in there? What do we need for equipment? And do we need more people? And we want to look at that. We don't have the data to tell us that today, but we want to gather that over the next couple of years, and hopefully by 2026 or so, I think it is in the plan, that we want to come to you with a recommendation on how we do that, and we'll do that through budget. Objective three, determine administrative staff workflow, making sure that all of the staff that are working daytime hours are being able to accomplish the work without working 60, 70, 80 hours a week. We want to make sure that we have the right number of folks there. We also want to look at, in the fourth objective, is evaluate our staffing on our suppression side for resiliency, to making sure that we don't have to have people waiting for a fire truck to respond to their emergency. We want to look at how long response times are. We don't want to be so busy that we can't meet that calls for service. Our goal is to be on scene in six minutes and 20 seconds from the time someone picks up the phone and dials 911, and have that quick response. But there's going to be some of those that are all going to tie together to some of the previous objectives, that maybe we make those a slower response and change some of those things as we go forward. The fifth objective is to explore recruitment and retention. Again, we've seen a significant number of folks leaving us that we haven't seen before, younger folks going on and taking other opportunities. What do we need to do to make sure that we keep that resilient workforce, the workforce that comes and sticks with us for a long time? We are rapidly becoming a very, very young Fire Department. By the time we hire for Station 8, we will have nearly 50 people under three years of service. That's just about 40% of the Fire Department will have, under three years of experience working for us. And then the sixth objective is develop and maintain that career development program for all promoted positions. So, we want to make sure that we have that process in place, that we keep educating our folks as they go their different years throughout the Fire Department. The fourth goal, maintain an organization that effectively administers plans and manages the physical resources. Again, this one will knock off objective number one pretty quick. Hopefully, sometime August, September next year, we'll open Fire Station 8 and be ready to serve the community in that area. The next objective, conduct a training facility assessment. Our building was built in 1966, and it's shown its years. You put fire in a building that many times, no matter how well you build it, it starts to deteriorate and cause problems, and that's one building that we're really going to need to take a quick look at in the very near future on replacement, and how do we work that? And we've already started putting some plans in place with that, talking with West Fargo, because they have a need for that as well. Doesn't make sense for the two of us to build a separate facility. We should look at how we can do that jointly and manage that together. So, we actually have a meeting planned next month to start that discussion and what that might look like and how we can do that together. Objective three, develop facilities, maintenance, and renovation replacement plans, wanting to make sure that all of our facilities are ADA accessible, as well as we've now moved into more of a diverse workforce, so making sure that we have restroom facilities that accommodate both men and women. And so, we don't have that currently, and so we have some work to do on some of those buildings. We're going to work on a plan to bring that to you through budget and how we can fix that. And then, objective number four, monitor growth and identify coverage solutions for Planning Zones 8 and 9. As those areas get built up in southwest Fargo, northwest Fargo, we're starting to see more and more responses in those areas, making sure that we keep that data in front of you and letting you know when there's going to be time for additions to the Fire Department for those response areas as well. And then finally, goal five, the Fire Department will work on being a dynamic and continually adjust to meet the changing fire problem through new technologies, new laws and regulations, and changes occurring in the community. So, we want to, first of all, look at our technology that we're using. We use a number of software platforms, and we want to start looking at that and working with our IS department and making sure that if there's redundancies, maybe we can get rid of something, maybe utilize something in a better way, how can we be more effective? And then find out what our weaknesses are as well. One of the weaknesses we do know is our data analytics, and we're going to start working on that and try and how we can gather that data and better use that, provide you with better information as the decision-makers for the community. And then, the last objective here, I kind of like this one, is to review the demographic data by census tract within planning zones. So, as we look in our communities, is there a specific problem that we need to target in different neighborhoods? And is there a public education message that we need to push to different areas within the city that meets the demographics that are within that area, and tailor those messages to better serve our citizens? So, with that, I'd stand for any questions that you might have.
Any questions? Commissioner Colpak.
Yes, I want to thank you, Chief, for this presentation, and I encourage the community to take a look at the document in today's package. It's, I think you'll find it both ambitious, but also very forward-thinking. And I'll add that when we had the community stakeholder meeting, it was an impressive group of people in that room that all had input and feedback. So, overall, really good job on the process.
Thank you.
Good job. Going to use the drone a lot fighting fires now?
Not for fighting, but telling us how the fire is reacting. We're looking at those options and using our Red River Valley UAS program and utilizing the police and fire and Sheriff's Office to maybe that we can combine and have different pilots, so the Fire Department pilots don't have to fly out of fire. We can have a police officer come and do that, and we're building that cadre of pilots as we go forward.
I think Commissioner Strand, you said at one of the meetings you went to, they're using a lot of drones in public safety, right?
They are first responders. Could I ask a question?
Go ahead.
Chief, I'm just needing to know, I think I heard you say 40% of our force is three years or less. How's that sit with you? And how does that portend to the future? Are we, is it, obviously, we're maybe paying enough to hire new people. Are we losing people through age and attrition and seniority? Or, I just want to kind of get a sense of the transitional picture.
Yeah, I just looked at that last week, actually, and I feel very comfortable with where we're at. We have a good number of very senior folks that are in good leadership positions right now and have that opportunity to speak and train and build that confidence with our folks, build that experience with our folks. And I think we're going to be set for a good little while here, for the next couple of years, with some good leadership in that captain level especially, and even within our battalion chief level, and even our senior firefighter level, to instill the wisdom and the knowledge and the experience that they have back with those younger folks and build them through that, the rigors that they need to go to be well-seasoned, well-trained, and effective firefighters for the community, and as well as medical delivery folks as well within the community. So, I feel very good about that.
And Mayor, might I ask? My family members, who are firemen, a few years ago, one of them asked, what's Fargo doing with preparation for events that are involving gunfire and things like that? And what is our approach to having our Fire Department prepared for like July 14th incidents?
Yeah, absolutely. We started that process about eight years ago, actually, and buying some, just some basic level equipment. We bought, I think it was six sets of gear that we kept on our battalion vehicles, and the idea was is that they would drive to the scene. Our guys would get in the gear and then be part of that warm zone work with the police officers. We've done an incredible amount of training with our local law enforcement and other Fire Departments about this. We now, today, have every position that we seat on the fire truck has the ability to wear ballistic gear and ballistic helmets if need be, and that's what happened on July 14th, as our folks that were in the truck, when the gunfire came in, dawned their PPE, that ballistic gear and those helmets. And as soon as Officer Robinson neutralized the assailant, they went into work, not knowing if there was anybody else there, but they had that protection. They're the ones that came to me and said, "Chief, we want this stuff. We want to be able to go in. We want to be able to stop that bleeding and save lives," because that's what our job is, that's what our calling is. So, they actually came to me, "Can you find the money?" So, I found the money to start it, and then we've built it, and now every truck carries that equipment. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
I'm sure I passed it.
So, I'm interested in your data analysis and looking for perhaps some trends there, as well as combining some community education in there. It seems like there's two fairly common types of fires, one being grills on balconies in apartment buildings, and then garage fires. Have you done any kind of analysis on those?
Yeah, you know, we did have a more, I would say, pressing problem about 10 years ago with balcony fires, not so much grills, but it was more smoking materials.
Okay.
And we went into a very intensive educational campaign and worked with apartment buildings. I know the Fire Marshal and I went to several meetings of the apartment ownership groups and apartment managers, you know, eight, 10 years ago, and started this, "Hey, we really need this to..." We've got to really encourage people not to smoke on their balconies and not utilize their potted plants to put out their cigarette butts, and working to provide those proper receptacles. I don't know that we've had great success in the apartment owners providing the proper receptacles, but we have seen, you know, a little bit of a decrease in that balcony fires. And, you know, the worst thing about those is they can throw a cigarette butt and get stuck between the deck material and the building, and it can smolder for a day or so, and the wind comes up just right, and the next thing you know, we have a fire on the outside of the building. Well, there's not been anybody here for 24 hours. How did that happen? Well, that's how that happens.
Commissioner Strand?
Bear with me, but thank you. I've heard reports that lithium-ion batteries with e-bikes, and then you take it to the level of EV vehicles. Just touch on that whole broader topic, if you could. It's my sense there's more risk out there with people with e-bikes than they ever know.
Yeah, there's a lot of concern with that going forward. I had just actually participated in a national webinar last week with that, where we were talking more about e-charged vehicles, whether it's bikes, scooters, wheelchairs even, some of the issues that they're presenting. It really becomes an issue when we talk about it in congregate living in our apartments and things like that. New York City is, in one step, has really had an issue with it. And then there's, you know, that's a whole thing that we need to look at, and that's one of the areas where I will be very strong in next year, as we go on code adoption, that I will be pushing for some things to remain in the code, and maybe we get a little bit tougher on how we recognize those things, because it's dangerous things that are out there and can really affect the lives and safety of our firefighters as they respond to these things.
I just wanted to do a shout-out to your team. Dr. Hogan brought a family of four to my attention, and your team found money, two bikes, and helped the family have a great Christmas. So, just wanted to say, I know the team oftentimes does community events and helps people out. So, Chief, just wanted to say thanks. Can I have a motion? Recommended motion, please?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion or questions? Good job. Roll call vote.
Preston?
Aye.
Colpak?
Aye.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Thank you.
We'll go back to item 44, application for transfer of Class F A Golf alcoholic beverage license to Kaburchstein at Doing Business 19th Old Rose Creek at North Island Hospitality at CJ's Tavern, to be located at 1500 East Rose Creek Parkway South. Steve Sprague to explain.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. So, with this license, this is for the Rose Creek Golf Course, and with this license application, we had one of the four applicants that didn't pass muster with the Police Department. When we brought that up to the other applicants, they said, you know, "We'll remove that person from the ownership group then." And he was going to just be like a silent investor anyway, and so... And then, the other thing is that it's all family. There were four investors or four people involved in this group, and one of the brothers, there were some issues on the background check. And so, the police chief, once that was done, and I've got the documents that show that it was done legally and removed from the ownership group, then it did go to Liquor Control, and then it was a recommendation of pass. So, I don't know if you have any questions on that one?
Is there anyone who wishes to speak to the City Commission regarding this application? Is anyone wishing to speak? If not, I'll close the public hearing. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second it, and then I have a question.
Mr. Preston?
So, can you explain, Steve? So, the structure of the corporation has the same ownership as what we get on the license application, is it? Or?
Originally, yes, it did. And so, that was the legal change that they made, was removing the one brother from the corporate structure. And so, basically, there's the, what's left are C is for Cody, and J is for Jordan, I believe it was, and then Brad is the dad. And Brad is basically the finance part of it, and then Cody is going to run the day-to-day operations of the golf course, part of the restaurant and bar. And then, you know, if you're familiar with Rose Creek, they have a large facility that can be used for, you know, weddings and banquets and things like that, and that's the part that, I believe it's Jordan, was going to run that part of it.
Any other questions? Roll call vote, please.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Preston?
Aye.
Colpak?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Application for Class F alcoholic beverage license for Alvenicaros, Doing Businesses Alvenicaros, to be located at 301 13th Avenue South. Steve?
This is an existing restaurant that has been in business for some time, saw a number of their customers that would go with other places because they could get adult beverage with their meal. And so, they're fully aware that their food sales need to exit alcohol sales, are fully aware that they have to do the server training and all of those other components, and so they successfully passed the background check, and it does come to you with a recommendation of approval.
So, anyone present who wishes to speak regarding this application? Anyone present who wishes to speak? If not, I'll close public hearings. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Colpak?
Aye.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Preston?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Application for transfer of Class A Club alcoholic beverage license for the Fargo Air Museum, Doing Businesses Fargo Air Museum, to be located at 16019th Avenue, North. Ownership change.
And with this one, if you remember this summer, the Fargo Air Museum applied for an alcoholic beverage license. They met all of the criteria to be a club license, which is 20 years in, you know, having an organization and 200 plus members. The license was originally issued in the name of the person that was the manager. He left their employment, and so now we're transferring the license to a new manager, or staying within the club, but it's going to be in this new manager's name.
What is it, an A license? A club?
It's the full alcoholic beverage license, only it has to have those criterion to be a club.
Okay. So, anyone present who wishes to speak regarding this application? Anybody wanting to speak? If not, I'll close the public hearing. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the... Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
So move.
You second it, then?
Sure, I'll second it.
Okay. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Preston?
Aye.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Colpak?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Application for Class Z alcoholic beverage license for Downtown Tavern, Doing Businesses Marge Bar, to be located at 210 Broadway, Suite 90.
And this license, if you remember back this summer, we declared that the city had reached a population of 130,000, which triggered additional licenses available. This is the Class Z license. We went through, we also did a resolution that said these are the steps that we're going to follow in issuing this license. We advertised for a number of months and that the license would be available to apply, and we only received the one application for this license. And the reason, this is Downtown Tavern has the Boiler Room and Marge's Bar. They are contiguous. You can easily move from one place to the other. The problem was is that with the success of Marge's Bar, he was pulling away his... The problem was is that with the success of Marge's Bar, he was pulling away his or having a trouble meeting starting to get to the position where he would have trouble meeting his food uh, requirements of the F A of of uh, the boiler room. And so he wanted to separate those two. And so he's taking the Z license to put at Marge's Bar and then the boiler room will go back to having to meet those food requirements.
So anyone present who wishes to speak regarding this application? Is anybody wanting to speak? If not, I close the public hearing. Do I have a motion?
I'll move. Second.
Move and seconded.
And then
Mr. Preston?
So Steve, um, this particular owner has just two licenses.
Um, also has, uh, I think it's is it called Marge's Diner on that's actually on Broadway that faces Broadway? Um, that was uh, original, I think that's called uh, the corporate name is New Monty's LLC. Um, so originally was Monty's and, you know, has moved its way forward.
And in this case, uh, there were no other competitors for this license, but is there a consideration? Do you consider um, when a a particular license holder has multiple licenses?
So um, I that wasn't one of the factors in issuing the license um, on that resolutions that we passed. Uh, so it was, you know, just the the application for the license. Uh, we did not look to see, do you have other licenses other than within the ordinance itself? It says that people having certain classes of license um, are not allowed to apply for that that license. Uh, this owner does not have any of those restricted classes and so he was able to apply for the license.
Mr. Pepcorn?
Sure. So Steve, I got my question is, so obviously this was a new we had to run because of population, but only one uh, we only had one person interested. So does that tell you, are we, do you the demand for new licenses? Does can you interpret that any way for us?
It to me, it it does, you know, if you're trying to do an analytical interpretation, it it kind of tells you that that maybe we're at the right level. Um, I do know that there are some other uh, license holders that have licenses that um, that they don't necessarily need that that maybe they could get by with an F A and they're considering um, trying to they're negotiating, trying to sell their license, you know, uh, which we haven't found a way to prohibit yet. Um, so there's there's kind of two things going there. I was kind of surprised knowing that there were some um, negotiations going on out there. Uh, that some of those other people didn't apply for this license. It would have been a an easier way to to get a license, really. So I I don't know. Haven't done too much uh, serious thinking about the analytics on it.
So can I ask one more, Mr. Chair? So the so you kind of keep track of how many licenses? Cause there are a certain number where they have a license that they're not really using. Is do you so you keep track of that?
Yeah, um, I do watch those and so we had a couple of them. One of them was Hennessy's that eventually now became um, oh gosh, I forgot, Double Down or something like that, just a little while just opened up not too long ago. Um, and then the other one was the one that we transferred to to Hiva. It went from Johnny Carino's to to Hiva's uh, restaurant. Um, so I don't, I'm not aware of any other ones. You always test me, Commissioner. Um, I'm not aware of any other ones right now that, you know, that we're doing that extension on that we that we've done in the past.
I was not trying to test you, uh, but I I just just uh, was mostly for informational, just so people know that there are some, but really uh, you wouldn't say we have like a pent up demand if we released a whole bunch more at this point. That was my main thing. So I apologize for making
That statement I would agree with. That I don't think that there's a huge pent up demand for new licenses.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Preston?
Aye.
Colpac?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Application for class C alcoholic beverage license for Uncorked Lounge doing businesses Uncorked Lounge located at fifty six oh one thirty-third Avenue South. Steve Sprague.
So uh, if you'll remember, a couple of months ago, we issued a class W license to Uncorked Lounge. Her original business plan was to have beer and wine. Um, after we issued the W license, then the City Commission granted three more beer licenses and three more wine licenses. And so now she's coming back um, requesting the the beer license to go with her wine license, which will give her the business plan that she had originally had.
So anyone present who wishes to speak to this application? Anybody wanting to speak to this? If not, I close the public hearing. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, roll call vote, please.
Colpac?
Aye.
Preston?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Public hearing forty-nine, re- reconsideration of City Commission's action on November twenty seventh, two thousand twenty-three to deny land management plan permit at three three eight ninth Avenue South. Scott Lindau and Dan Dow to explain.
Mayor Commissioners, good evening. At the November twenty-seventh commission meeting, uh, there was a public hearing held regarding the appeal of a Board of Adjustment decision regarding the land management plan permit at three three eight ninth Avenue South. That motion to support the land management permit was declared lost for a lack of a majority. At the last commission meeting, Commissioners voted to reconsider this permit and hold another public hearing. Uh, in the last packet, I was all I included the license agreement, license and use agreement for the property that was developed with Nancy Morris's assistance, also certificate of liability insurance that we required as part of that. Quick recap, chapter eleven oh eight of the municipal code does allow for vegetation to exceed eight inches in height. Basically giving property owners and occupants an opportunity to establish prairie wildflowers, grasses and other pollinator plants as alternatives to the Kentucky bluegrass that we typically see. Prairie plantings can definitely be a challenge in an urban area and it requires uh, some knowledge and some expertise expertise uh, to um, know how to maintain it properly. And typically there's a contractor involved in most of these cases. Uh, this commitment to maintain it is reflected in when the property owner submits the request for a land management plan application. It's in there and in this case, it's also included in the use and and maintenance agreement that was developed. So basic needs and timing typically, there's really six criteria that I listed out in the cover letter. Uh, anywhere between May and roughly October and every landscape is going to be a little unique as far as the timing on these, but they all have some basic criteria as far as weed control, mowing, uh, other maintenance, hand weeding, replanting, reseeding, all that is a component and it's kind of customized to each property uh, for the most part. The only thing I didn't include in there is a controlled burn. Uh, that's typically a really, really good maintenance tool. In a lot of cases where it's in town, it's not very practical, uh, but um, it's still a good one when we have the opportunity. Some costs that I put at the bottom, I tried to compare Veterans Boulevard, roughly fifteen hundred dollars that we paid. We have, those are landscaped with prairie uh, landscaping, wildflowers and grasses. In two thousand twenty-three, the cost for contractor was about fifteen hundred dollars to maintain those. And the property we're talking about tonight, three thirty eight ninth Avenue South, it was in it was in the the plan that was submitted by Prairie Restorations. Little over a thousand dollars over three years, uh, just to kind of give you an idea of what the costs are for uh, some properties. Uh, once we, once we get through the discussion tonight, uh, the recommended motion, after we we review all the information, including the maintenance use agreement as part of it, would be to uphold the Board of Adjustment decision reaffirming the Forestry Department's approval of the land management plan permit at three three eight ninth Avenue South and act to approve the application. Questions?
Scott did a wonderful job there. I'm here to support any uh, questions that might come up about uh, maintenance that the city currently does or anything we do with.
How many acres do we do right now?
How many acres? We currently maintain about eight hundred and forty acres of of various lands across the city from retention ponds to about three hundred and forty bio properties.
And how much in our budget is this? All these work?
So currently between uh, retention ponds and our uh, flood biots, we spend annually around two hundred and twenty-five thousand a year mowing and uh, weed applying treatments so that we can keep them growing and continuous.
Any questions, Commissioners? Mr. Pepcorn?
So, Mr. Chair, so I guess my question is for you, are you comfortable with this? Cause we're setting a precedent uh, and to administer this, obviously you're going to have other requests for this. And so do you feel we have the capacity to do that?
So Commissioner Pepcorn, we currently have a handful of licenses out there where the adjacent property is maintaining and and taking care of the property and doing with it, as long as they don't construct something on the property, they can do it and plant gardens or do other other things. So this would be uh, not something new to us and and if if it works out, then it would continue forward and and it'd be a good relationship. If something happened, we do have the tools in place to go back and and reclaim the land and and put it back into, you know, a regular green grass.
So and just one more, so I've had uh, requests and maybe you've already gotten emails too for people requesting all parcels that they that they would like. And so you feel we're, you'd be able to handle those requests? Uh, and and some you'd approve and some maybe not, but you have a system and you're comfortable with how how it would be administered?
I believe we are set. This one is a little different, different uh, animal for us. This was a property that exchanged hands. We did have an agreement with the property owner. Prior to this owner, I was not aware that the property exchanged hands. Um, but uh, the previous property owner had been doing some mowing and we've been working together uh, to to kind of use that property.
But I guess the main thing is this is public land and so you have to have everyone have the opportunity to have that. Do you get, what is the process that you go through for that?
So typically we've taken requests such like this and and we've taken it forward to our our PUPAC committee. Um, a lot of times we evaluated it based it um, basically on the fact that they're the adjacent property owner. Um, we've never seen a request come forward. I'll take that back. We have seen requests come forward for parcels that are separated from their adjacent parcel. We we've looked into them and and we haven't had anything go farther than that at this point. A lot of times the the big factor is the insurance process and and I think a lot of the insurance agencies would struggle if it wasn't directly adjacent to their current property.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Preston?
Just a kind of a question, uh, a broader question. So Boulevard Gardens, how are they different than what we're talking about here? That's a permitting process, right? Two?
Only if it's going to be a raised garden. If there isn't going to be a raised garden, there is criteria already outlined in that program process that they need to follow, but that's not a permitted one unless it's a raised garden.
So um, are those, that property is actually publicly owned, is it not?
It's public right away, yes.
Yeah, so the Boulevard Gardens have been happening for a while. That's another example of perhaps something similar.
Correct.
Yes, that that relates directly to the adjacent property owner, of course. It's very similar to the situation.
Mr. Colpac?
Yeah, I just want to appreciate all the background. I learned on pollinator gardens in the last month and a half, but um, you know, my my original concern was the maintenance of this particular piece of property and after working with public works, very comfortable with the process. So appreciate all the information.
Mr. Strand? Thank you. Uh, I'm I'm pleasantly surprised with the feedback we heard from the community. They 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 weren't so much interested in just this parcel. There was a a much bigger view of from from many people of of the pollinator gardens, the environmental friendliness, the the things with the climate that we can do. And and there's a lot of folks that would really like to see us uh, use this moment to leverage it forward to do more of that type of stuff in our in our in our in our community. Um, and and yet I I one 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 model, for example, that suggested is like the adopt a mile. People adopt a highway, adopt a portion of a road, adopt a garden, it it, you know, things like that where we can allow groups or people to adopt properties. And maybe with the diversion lands out there and things, properties out there, we we might have opportunities to really let them go forward further with this interest if if it's managed. And that's the key is managing it. But I I want to, I want to thank everybody involved with this from the beginning to the end. We've ended up with a tighter process. We've ended up with a clearer expectation of the rules to follow and the order to follow those rules, how to how to get in the process and what to do. We've also uh, um, modified our thinking to to listen to the people who who don't want something like this demolished or destructed. Um, so so thank you all for the work you're doing. And I and maybe with the Sustainability and Resiliency Committee, we can really brainstorm about what further and the diversion authority, what more can we do?
Yep.
And how can it be done and how can it be of benefit to the greater to the people? So but thank you both. And everybody and everybody in your team. I did forget the public hearing part. I'm sorry. Uh, is there any president wishes to address City Commission regarding this appeal?
Yes, I would. Thank you for, I'm I'm just going to read my comments to stay within a reasonable amount of time and not stray from uh, the points I want to make to you. Um, thank you for allowing us to provide uh, our comments regarding the complaint filed by one of our neighbors. My name is Dr. Daryl Ross. I'm the co-owner at three forty ninth Avenue South here in Fargo. I'm speaking on behalf of myself and my spouse, Dr. Kimberly Wallen, who had planned to be here but was unable to make it this evening. We take full responsibility for not obtaining a permit uh, prior to installing Urban Prairie in two thousand twenty-one. Uh, this comment is to provide context to this oversight. We co- we contracted with Minnesota Native Landscapes. It's over here east of us in Glendon, Minnesota. They've been doing this kind of work for a long time. Um, they work with the city of Fargo to um, to install a restored prairie all along the Red River and other places in the in the city of Fargo. Um, in doing so, we incorrectly assumed that they would have the permits either in place or would um, would have gone through the process to obtain them to install the urban prairie, to restore the prairie. We're not blaming them at all. We're just providing some context here. Uh, we should have confirmed our assumptions and and we didn't do that. And we take full responsibility for that, okay? Um, the plan to establish and maintain the urban prairie is included in the land management plan that um, Scott has provided you with. Um, uh, and that's in appendix one in the packet of material that I dropped off at all of your offices about a week ago. This is not an environmental tragedy in in no way. And and the plants are not noxious weeds. Uh, they are intentionally selected plants that are native to this region of North Dakota before Fargo and the rest of us were here. This, these prairies covered millions of acres throughout the the um, midwestern uh, part of uh, the United States. Um, I won't go into all of the details of ecological benefits. You can see that in the letter to the editor to the forum that was written by uh, Audubon Great Plains. That's in appendix two of the material that I provided to you previously. But I I will mention that the restored Pocket Prairie is about fifty feet from the flood uh, the floodwaters embankment, the the dyke. Um, the city of Fargo has been working with Audubon Great Plains, formerly Audubon, Dakota, uh, through their bird friendly uh, communities and community conservation programs to establish more native vegetation within the city Fargo limits. And the city has been doing that for a number of years now. Um, the person filing the complaint and appealing the decision of the Board of Adjustments misled the city officials by stating they represented ten neighbors. Um, this is not true for two reasons. Number one, there are not ten adults excluding myself and Dr. Wallen that live within two hundred feet of the Pocket Prairie. Uh, number two, the neighbors to the east of us on ninth Avenue South are indifferent. They don't have strong feelings one way or the other, either either for or against the the restored prairie. But our neighbors in the two houses directly to the west of us uh, all support the prairie and we've provided you with their names and signatures um, in um, in appendix three of the information I provided to you. I also included in appendix three, a number of emails that we received from people all over the city of Fargo and as far away as Nina, Wisconsin. A couple who graduated from NDSU in Concordia many, many years ago and they still keep in touch and with what's going on in Fargo. I provided all those emails and correspondence with you, which uh, strongly supported what we've done to uh, to provide that urban prairie. The point about preventing people from walking through is very misleading. We don't understand that because uh, on the north and west sides of the property, it it's it's private property. It's it's our property and your neighbor uh, neighbor's property. So there's no place to walk through the prairie. Um, and in fact, we worked with our neighbor to the west of us when the prairie was installed. We purchased some stepping stones and put them from his property across the the corner of the prairie. This is only two thousand square feet. Let me remind you of that. Um, so anyone with permission to be on his property is certainly entitled to walk across the prairie. And and in fact, we we encourage the neighborhood, the neighbors and the community to come and enjoy the the wonderful prairie that that's become established there. Anybody can approach it from the south side across the turf grass on tenth Avenue South, which is city property or from the dyke. And and we we welcome that and welcome people. And in fact, we've had quite a few people in the couple of years that it's been there, walking on the dyke who have addressed us and said, hey, that looks wonderful. That's beautiful. So um, we we really appreciate that. And and I'll I'll just point out that we thought we were doing, making a contribution to the community here at the neighborhood and the community of Fargo and we still believe that that we we have. Um, so um, so I'll I'll stop right there. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have, but but I really appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. We don't usually get
Thank you for your comments. We don't usually get into a dialogue. So is there somebody else wishes to speak?
Hello. My name is Erica Venberg. I am a Fargo resident. I live in the North Fargo area, and I wanted to speak to the commission in general support of Dr. Ross's prairie garden. I think it is a wonderful thing that he took the initiative to privately build out this whole thing. It is quite a bit of initial investment to build such a garden. It was initially disappointing to hear that he was denied a land use permit for this space. I acknowledge that, of course, as he has acknowledged, that he didn't initially seek out this permission because he didn't quite think they needed to. I'm glad that he has taken the steps to do so, and that he was granted one. It's upsetting that essentially a single neighbor could derail a whole process and a whole established garden. And it's discouraging to other members of the community and other people who have an interest in establishing similar gardens or landscapes from going against like the standard gardening or landscaping practices. Again, he didn't quite follow the procedure, but I think the procedure now through this whole process has become more widely known. It's become clear. There are like greater resources for establishing this. I think this is perhaps just a learning opportunity for the city of Fargo as perhaps more residents or more groups within the community desire to start these particular kinds of gardens, especially on public land. And I would really appreciate it if you reconsider your vote in favor of reestablishing this permit. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'll close the public hearing. Do I have a motion? And I think Nancy, if you can point out the legal parts of the motion?
No, Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Make one more.
My name is Marilyn Sights. I am the person that is opposing the weed garden in my front yard. And I'm sorry that people feel that I am not entitled to my opinion about the weed patch. Obviously, that makes me less than a human person and a taxpayer. Number one, I'd like to know how, seeing how this weed patch is so important to the city of Fargo and to Ross, I'd like to know how the city of Fargo existed before he planted his weed patch in our front yard, which is city property. How did the city exist all these years without the weed patch? And also, I don't appreciate the fact that Ross, in the Fargo Forum, invaded my privacy and my safety by stating which floor I lived on in the building that adjoins his weed patch. That is invading my privacy and my safety. Anybody walking along the dike, all they have to do is climb up my patio, and they are in my front yard. However, that is a misstatement when he stated where I lived in that building. Again, I'm sorry, you people that are opposed to my ideas. But you know what? All you people that are the weed lovers, I would guarantee you that none of you have a weed patch in your garden. And furthermore, if Ross wants a weed patch so bad, why didn't he plant it in his own property? No one would object to that. That's all I have to say.
Now I'll close the public hearing. Nancy, just go over the rules, please.
So this is presented to you for reconsideration. So you would make a motion to approve or deny the permit that has been presented on appeal from the Board of Adjustment, and then also a motion to grant the license if the motion to approve the permit is carried forward.
But it has to be by who was the majority on the last vote?
No, that has been completed, the motion for reconsideration.
Can be anybody, then. Okay. Do I have a motion?
I move we grant the permit.
Sir, a second.
Second.
Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Strand?
Yes.
Colpak?
Aye.
Pepcorn?
No.
Preston?
Aye.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Now, there's a second motion you want?
I move we grant the license.
For a second.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call vote.
Strand?
Yes.
Colpak?
Aye.
Pepcorn?
No.
Preston?
Aye.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Thank you for a good discussion on it. I hope everybody's educated how we can do this. Update of the 2024-2027 Engineering CIP. Tom Akbos.
Good evening. Here to provide an update on CIP, and I will jump right into it. So just a little bit of a timeline, and the development of this four-year CIP certainly goes much further back than October this year. But when we kind of kicked off this process of the approval of the four-year CIP, that started with a video that we worked with our comms team on to provide some background information. We provided that to City Commission and the public late October of this year, and then followed that up with an informational meeting on November 6. Tonight, we're, I'm just looking to provide an update, kind of relating to some of the questions that I've gotten from residents, and also that I've seen through media as well. And then in two weeks, intend to be back seeking approval of this four-year CIP. So I'm going to recap a few things. Again, last time, we talked about, you know, how do we gauge how much work we should be doing? Kind of looked at three different strategies, what I called the conservative, moderate, or optimistic. And really, we're looking at that moderate type of work that we should be performing, really based on the data that we've seen within our community. So we talked about how, you know, looking at two categories, core neighborhoods and federally projects, we're doing about 2.1, so falling right in between that optimistic and moderate range. But if we're able to add the prairie dog projects and those continue, we're right in that moderate range, kind of where we want to be. So specific to 2024, this is what we're planning on doing. So this is our citywide map. You see a lot of different colors up here. They all represent different types of projects, ranging from, you know, new development to pavement preservation type things like micro surfaces or seal coats or milliner overlays, ranging to, you know, alley paving and street reconstruction and a lot of other things. And so the first map there was the north side, north of 13th Avenue. Next image here is south of 13th Avenue. But one of the things and one of the reasons why we've been talking about a four-year CIP and why we think it's so important is really for these maps. So really, to be able to communicate with our residents where we're going over the next four years. And so this is just specific to the Hawthorne neighborhood here, and this is what we'd ideally be communicating upon approval of, hopeful approval of the four-year CIP. Our communication with the neighborhood of, here's where we're coming, you know, here's what to expect in timelines, and here's a cost that you can anticipate. So this is Hawthorne neighborhood, Horace Mann, Longfellow, and then a portion of Roosevelt. Again, that's one of the huge drivers of this four-year CIP is to be able to communicate that to our residents. As we've talked about before, CIP is really funded through five different buckets: sales tax, utility funds, prairie dog, federal funds, and special assessments. We've talked about one of the issues that we've experienced is the annual rate of construction inflation. And over the last 15 years, that's averaged just shy of 7.2%. We talked quite a bit about special assessment caps. Just want to remind you what they are. It's really just a way in which we limit the maximum amount a property owner is going to pay for an improvement. And it provides a predictable amount that the property owner will pay through special assessments, and then it ensures equity throughout the city with all the property owners. So again, going back to that inflation comment earlier, if we tied our construction caps from 2008, tied it to inflation, you'd see where we are today and where we'd be projecting into the future. And the issue is with our current policy, this is what we've done. And you can see that very wide gap that's happened over the years. So that really brings us back to why are we proposing an increase to the caps? There are a number of reasons. It really does start with the Special Assessment Task Force that took place in 2018, 2019. Thirteen members from the public were a part of that task force, ultimately made 26 recommendations after that year-long study, 22 of which we have incorporated into our process or funding policy. One of the recommendations at the time was to go to a 70/30 cost split, so 70% city-funded, 30% special assessed. And so that's what we did in 2019. We set the caps to be at that 70/30. The issue is that the caps haven't kept pace with inflation. So again, green line here, you can see what those caps would have had to do to follow inflation, and blue line is really what they have done. And so we're falling behind. So what is being proposed? Again, 20% increase in those caps in 2024, followed by 7.19% in '25, '26, and '27. And again, the reason for that rate is that that's a 15-year average of inflation. What this would result in if it's approved is about an 80/20 cost split over the next four years. So 80% city-funded, 20% special assessed. Without the increase, though, that cost split would be about 85/15 over that next four years. And what would really happen is there'd be a greater reliance on sales tax. And I'll touch on this a little bit more, but if you recall, you know, one of the issues is that even with this proposed increase, currently, our sales tax needs are outpacing the revenues. Another question that came up was who will be impacted by the proposed increase to caps? There is some confusion by this. It does not impact any existing special assessments. So those are already set, and those would not be increasing. It does impact projects that utilize caps. So a milliner overlay is a flat percentage, 50% special assessed. A project like that is not going to be impacted. The property is that it does typically impact our street recon projects. So the, you know, the question up here, what's the typical number of single-family homes that will be special assessed for local street recon projects from '24 to 2027? It's typically about 200 per year. And so what's the reaction been? One of the things I want to communicate, so as part of the consent agenda this evening, the fourth core neighborhood reconstruction project for 2024 was awarded. And so we've already gone out for bids. We've already awarded four of those projects. As part of that, we were pretty aware of what we were doing here and the reason why we were doing it. When we communicated with those property owners, we included a 20% increase to the cap. What we didn't want to do was communicate a lesser amount and have to go back and re-explain what was happening. And so what we did is we included the 20% increase to the cap with the hope that it would be approved by City Commission, and if not, then we'd go back and communicate a lesser amount. But so with that, we've special assessed 214 parcels over those four projects, and we've received a total of eight protests. And so the way that works out is it's about 4% protest rate. The way I think of it, 96% of the properties that we've communicated with support what we're doing. They support the projects. They support the funding with that increase in caps. Just a reminder, you know, here's where we anticipate being on these local street reconstructions over the next four years, about just short of 20% being special assessed. City of West Fargo, the current policy is 60% special assessed, Bismarck 30, Grand Forks 20. So what impact does this have on a property? So this is actually the project that was approved tonight by City Commission. So common lot along this project is, there's a weird dimension, but 49.91 feet. And so we'll just take a look at the typical property owner assessment, equivalent monthly costs, and then percent of the total project special assessed. So this is what it would be if there were no city funds into it, and it was 100% special assessed. The cost of that property would be $72,000. That's not what we're proposing to do. The current policy, which would be just a 2% increase in caps next year, would be about $11,300 total. But what we're proposing, that 20% increase in caps, would bring that cost to $12,876. And if we went to, if we tried to go back to that 70/30 split that was originally recommended by the task force, it'd be over $21,000 for this property. And then you can see on the bottom, you know, what percentage of the total project is special assessed in this. Again, every project is unique, and so, you know, this one averages, this one is about 16.9% special assessed. Again, where we estimate we're going to average over the next four years is just short of 20%. So just want to highlight the overall CIP, and you can see all the different categories we use within the CIP and how that relates on each year, and then ultimately how that averages. So the average CIP over the next four years, we anticipate to be just over $100 million per year. And then where's the funding come from? So again, just draw your attention to the yellow on the very bottom, the percent special assessed. So in 2023, it was about 24% across all of our CIP. What's being shown in these future years includes the anticipated 20% increase to caps in '24, and the following increases of 7.19% the following year. But what it does is, in '24, we'd be at about 27%, '25, about 20%, 16% in '26, 18% in 2027. And again, over that next four years, we'd anticipate it being about 20% special assessments. So what's that mean in dollar values? You can see by this pie chart, this is total funds used in the CIP, about 82%, or sorry, 82 million, which I noted on the previous slide, about 20% of the overall CIP is funded through special assessments. But I think what this illustrates well is that, you know, it's just a piece of the funding puzzle, right? There are a lot of different sources that we rely on to fund our CIP, and special assessments are an important part, but there are a lot of other parts of it as well. Another thing I want to highlight, we talked a little bit about sales tax, and unfortunately, our needs of sales tax are currently outpacing our revenues. So first, draw your attention to this green bar in 2023. We anticipate that we'll end the year 2023 with about a $12 million balance in our sales tax fund. It goes slightly less in 2024, but you really see, you know, that need outpacing the revenues in '25, '26, we would go negative, and '27, we go about $6 million negative if we don't make some changes.
Mr. Chairman, could I ask a question here?
Sure.
So Tom, does this include the 20% increase on specials?
It does, yes. Yeah, good question. So again, I made this comment at our informational meeting, and I just want to make sure it's clear again tonight. You know, currently, the funding policy isn't sustainable, right? Like I mentioned a couple of times, the sales tax needs are outpacing the revenues. But there are solutions. There are a number of different solutions that could be considered. So one would be increasing utility rates for utilization in the engineering CIP. There could be additional increases to special assessments beyond what's been proposed. We could look to modify the sales tax allocation. Currently, there's a quarter cent to water, quarter cent to wastewater. City Commission could change to choose to kind of turn that dial and move some of that to engineering CIP. It would certainly have an impact on those utilities and their revenue adequacy model. Another option would be to, if the sales tax is extended past 2028, there's currently a quarter cent that's designated to flood. There's certainly an option would be to consider pushing some of that, if not all of that, towards the engineering CIP.
Mr. Chair, can I ask a question? So Tom, at the next meeting, can you have what that number would be if we did the half-cent sales tax and shifted that all to engineering? Can you come back with that number? And then also, if you wouldn't mind me adding, if you could figure out a way with new properties to have, to do away with special assessments and to have it be as part of the real estate transaction, the infrastructure. If you could do that, I'd appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
And I could speak to that a little bit right now, too. So currently, the quarter cent that we get is about $8 million per year. And so if we went back to that previous slide, so this just short of 82 million special assessments, that does not include greenfield development. So this is special assessments used to really rebuild and maintain our infrastructure. So about $20, $20.5 million per year. And so by moving the quarter cent flood sales tax, again, assuming it gets extended, there would still be a shortfall there of what that would generate versus what is currently being used in special assessments.
But, so Mr. Chair, what I'd like you to do is say, if we abolish the specials, can we put that into the lots? Is that a, that's what most cities do, correctly?
We could do that for greenfield development. Again, this portion of the pie that I'm showing here is not greenfield development. It's not new development. This is really what we use to-
It doesn't help out. I mean, if we do that, it doesn't help out this problem with CIP.
Correct.
Mr. Chairman, if I could follow up with.
I just a question, Pippen, did you want to finish up a question?
No, but so, so what I'd like you to do is give us the overall picture. If we have that half cent sales tax, what do we have to do with, with the greenfield development? Put, put that into their real estate. That's, that's the question.
It's a quarter cent. So let's be clear, it's a quarter cent that he's taking. So we have for the flood diversion, a quarter cent. Another one, streets, water and wastewater. So if we revote on it, you may want to change your numbers on the quarter cent where it goes.
No, that's what I'm saying. I, I mean, the, this is, this is, it expires. And at that point, we could change the wording and change it from a quarter cent to a half cent. So what I'm saying is, so if you combine that with something on, on the greenfields, that's, I'm trying to see if, if we can do that. I guess that's my question for you, Tom. Thank you.
Yes, I, I will be sure to, to include that in two weeks to try to.
Commissioner Preston?
So could I ask a clarifying question when you had the comparative use of special assessment across the jurisdictions? Was that both greenfields and reconstruction?
No, what we, what we're looking at here.
It's just reconstruction.
Just local street reconstruction. So again, thinking of a core neighborhood type street, a residential street that we're reconstructing. Because there's, there's a ton of nuance in our policy and other cities' policies when it comes to greenfield or arterial or whatever it might be.
And then you have to remember, mill and overlay is 50 50.
Correct.
It does not, it does not hit the 80 20. So mill and overlay, when people get that, it's going to be a 50 50 cost.
Right. Okay, I'm going to jump back down to this one. So again, you know, some cities or counties choose to obligate a portion of a mill levy to streets. The city of Fargo currently does not. That's a potential solution. State legislature did give, give cities the ability to create a utility fee for streets. Again, that's a, a part of a potential solution. Again, or it could be a combination of all those things. And as I said last time, a decision the city commission could make as well is, is to, to fix this funding issue by doing less work. Again, not my recommendation, just because it would have adverse long-term impacts to our infrastructure. So next steps, again, plan to be back in two weeks to seek, seeking approval. Between then and now, if there's any additional questions that come up tonight that I can't answer, I would, I would look to, to be able to clearly answer those next week. And with that, happy to answer any questions or have any discussion.
Further questions?
Mr. Strand? Thank you. Tom, I'm, I'm curious for, for all of us, if, you know, Prairie Dog, Prairie Dog is not certain. In fact, I'm uncomfortable using the words because I don't know how long that will sustain at the state level and what it'll even be called. And we have a sales tax vote coming up. We don't know for sure that we want the public to vote in favor. But that's a question mark too. One of your many options was to do less work. I think we need to look at that seriously. What would less work be? What would it look like? Would it be less alley paving in neighborhoods where they're used to getting concrete or re, resurfacing? I just would be curious what our, our, our less work could be. You know, when, when I grew up on a farm, they had the farm to market road program. Sorry, I'll keep this short, but they had a policy, every five miles you had to have a paved road to get to a grain elevator. Well, that didn't last forever. They don't have hardly any paved roads anymore in rope paths and they're all gravel because they can't afford that policy. So I'm wondering where is it that we can make changes that we can live with in the future of our growth of our city, you know? Knowing that the Prairie Dog potentially is at risk and sales tax, we, it's a hope and a prayer.
Yeah, maybe, maybe to speak to, to some of that. You're, you're right, Prairie Dog is not guaranteed. We track that on a monthly basis. We are currently trending to fill both of our buckets this biennium. But yeah, there's, there's no guarantee that, that we'll have it in the future. Again, when you look at this funding summary, to lose Prairie Dog and try to supplement it with something else would be pretty impactful. Same thing with sales tax, right? To remove sales tax from this. Unless, unless the, unless the city is going to drastically change the amount of work that's being performed, which again, what we're proposing is what we think is the appropriate amount to maintain our infrastructure. And not maintaining our infrastructure ultimately costs the city and our residents more in the long term, right? So that's why we're proposing what we're proposing today. But, you know, so if, if Prairie Dog went away, if sales tax went away, utility rates and special assessments are how we fill that gap of, of that funding shortfall. So that, that would be the concern I would have if those things went away. But, you know, really we talked, talked last year. I remember Brendan and I talking about this when we were talking about the CIP. IC Prairie Dog is a great tool to kind of give us some time to, to kind of vet some of these options and figure out what's the right strategy to fund this long-term. And that's what we currently have. I would say we, we have some time to figure out how we, you know, there's, there's a few years yet before we, we run out of sales tax in a, in our current fund. And we, we currently are on trend to, to have those Prairie Dog buckets filled. And so we have a little bit of time to, to make some pretty tough decisions.
Commissioner Preston?
So Tom, if you could go back to the slide with all of the options for funding. That one included, but the one where, yeah, where it has all the options.
This one?
So, yeah. So my question would be, because I tend to look at this sales or this special assessment proposal increase as a Band-Aid of sorts. Why not take a look at the entire option, list of options and figure out how we're going to fix this long-term instead of putting this Band-Aid on for this next year?
Yeah. So my, my opinion, or how I'd respond to that is that, you know, the proposed increase of special assessments is part of the solution. In my mind, it's probably all these things. I don't, I don't think it can be any one thing to correct the funding issue. I think it has to be a little bit of probably all.
Yeah, I agree fully. I apologize if I can. If you go back to the graphic that showed the cost of infrastructure going up and the line graph that showed the actual, yeah. So with the increase that you're proposing, is that bottom line, does that include that increase or not?
It, it doesn't.
So what, what does it do? What's the impact with a 20% increase?
Let me, I'm going to really dive into slides here because I did have that at a previous meeting. This is really what that looks like. So the red line is, is what we're showing is that increase. So.
So the point here is we aren't even getting close.
Correct.
With a 20%. That's my bigger concern is that long-term funding issue. And we've got to figure that out. And even though we might have a year or two that reserve fund for reconstruction is getting depleted pretty quickly. So instead of coming back in two weeks with some specific proposals, I would say we need to look at all those options and figure out what we're going to do long-term.
Yeah, part of the, I'll just answer one thing real quick. So part of the concern is, you know, when I, you know, a 20% increase in the caps alone seems pretty significant to me. You know, when comparing it though, to going to a 30% special assessed, what the task force recommended, you can see here, we'd, we'd be nearly doubling the rate of, of someone. And, and that's pretty impactful. And so again, when, when I look at, you know, 20% of the total revenue for, for use in the CIP comes from special assessments, $82 million over the next four years. We, we saw in 2018 and through the task force, what can happen if we special assess too much? And so what I would hate to do is to say, well, let's just raise special assessments to get to 30%, 40%, whatever it is to, to fix that gap and have such an uproar that we lose special assessments. Again, I, I would, I would say one of the things that we saw this year in communicating with those properties and the 20% increase in caps, again, less than 4% of, of property owners protested those projects. Again, I think we are at a place, from my conversations with people, right? I, it's not, it's not nothing, right? But most people really seem to understand the benefit of the road improvement they're getting and, and feel the cost is relatable to the benefit they're getting. That seems to be the, the understanding that I've had from property owners.
But I think you're seeing on this slide very much so is that the time special commission got done, it was 70 30. But when you go up and look at this, it looks like it'd be a lot because 76 versus 128. The commissioners have to remember, if you do a street tax or some type of street issue, it's a tax. So regardless of how you do it, you get more mileage out of that than the mill issue. If we have you one or two mills, that's only 1.2 million basically. So the issue you have, if you do a sales, a street tax, that has to be voted on by the people to enhance that part of the thing. And in some communities, they've gone to a street tax to help quote, take care of the streets. And, and that'll be the discussion. But I think this slide is pertinent. And could you go to your overhead CIP one as well? I think we have to remember when you're showing the CIP total cost, the, the circle which we have.
Well, the, the funding?
The funding, that's over four years. So that's not just one year, that's four years. So your special assessments are only 20 million in that timeframe of every year we're doing it. So to Commissioner Preston's comment, it doesn't catch us up to inflation. But when we've tried to catch inflation, public has objected. We had huge objections at 50 50. 70 30 even looks now that would be objectionable. Can you do 75 25? It's still getting raised the cost to consumer. So whatever things, I don't think Commissioner Preston, Tom can solve it this next meeting to have it all worked out, all the different things we have to do. And Commissioner Strand, the utility tax, which we have a 1%, it's 1%, 1 cent we have now goes out in 28. It has been very, utility rates have been held down, a lot of things have been held down. But a lot of what Tom's going through is any numbers of things that the people in Fargo like could change and go to a higher rate. So we have to be a little careful when we suddenly try to solve everything in one year. I think it's a study that you have to look at all those elements and figure out maybe over a six month period of time. But I think your simple change this year is 20% increase. That does not have a significant impact and minimal protest. It's a good sign that at least you're on the right track as far as I'm concerned. Commissioner Preston?
Yeah, let me clarify, I'm not arguing for special assessments to be making up that entire gap by any means. But what I am saying more, probably I can say a little more clearly is my worry is that special assessments, we put it, we increase it by 20% this time. And then when we look at the long-term funding, are we looking at another 20% increase? So until we figure out that whole package, I'm a little bit livery of just doing one small piece.
Well, it's 20, 20 plus seven after that for the next three years.
Correct. What, what was, what was utilized when we put together this four-year CIP was a, was an assumed 20% increase in special assessment caps for 2024, followed by a 7.19% the following three. And again, that's, that's where it goes back to, you know, potential solutions. You know, this is where I, I would really need direction from city commission of where do we want to go, right? Cause we, we can, we can run the numbers, we can work with finance, we can, we can figure out options, but, but really commission would have to tell us what their preference is.
Commissioner Pippen?
So Mr. Chair, 99% of the country doesn't have special assessments. And so I believe it's time to get rid of special assessments. And what we need to do is find out what do they do in other parts of the country? How does the, how does the cost of infrastructure included in the real estate? That's what we need to do, plus the, plus this half cent sales tax. So that, that's what we need. The time has come to discontinue special assessments. No one else does it in the whole country. Why don't we find what they do and copy them? That's probably a good idea.
Actually, some people do do specials. Commissioner Strand?
Something that I would benefit from would be a little more, a lot more data of what would it mean to have these deferred maintenance costs come into our future? What, where would they be? How much would they be? Where will, where will the impacts be, the impacts be the greatest? Where can we trim without as much pain? I, I think we need a lot more data on, on, on what that means to us and to people and and I understand this notion that we don't have much protests and we don't have much response and people aren't, you know, asking for abatements. Truth is their eyes glaze over. They, they see so much of this, it's like Greek. You know, understanding specials and these, these letters and these communications, these assessments and these. It's just, I can understand that people really kind of throw their arms up in there. The, the unspoken mindset out there is that it's out of control, our spending. And that they can't have any impact on, on it. You know, that's just, that's, there's maybe no basis for that, but there's too many people who think that. And then they, then they see our costs of skyrocketing and then they see their, their evaluation, property evaluations skyrocketing, which means their taxes skyrocket. It's just a really vicious cycle we're in. So my concern is being prepared for the worst. Really quantifying what that means in levels of worst. You know, if you really have a turning economy or times really get tough, and we've seen that, we will again. You know, what's that mean? And where can we make action that will really substantially pull our belts in knowing that the folks that we, the people in our community that we, we count on for revenues and taxes, that they're you know, $67 here, $128 here, $12 there. It just really adds up to people on fixed incomes.
Any other comments or questions? This is just information only. Next meeting, we'll decide, go ahead. Remind the commissioners, it's the CIP for 2024. It's something Tom has to have passed in some matter next week or next meeting, basically. Thank you.
Thank you.
Decision on North Broadway Bridge. Jeremy Gordon can explain that or you, Tom?
It's me. He's here, he's, he was somewhere as, as backup, but we also have Nathan, if he can help out with anything, and then a couple, a couple individuals from Houston Engineering as well. So, you know, again, go to our project timeline slide. Still crazy to me that we, we closed this bridge nearly three years ago. We've provided a number of updates here in the last couple of months. And I was here in front of you two weeks ago, warning that I was going to be back for, looking for a decision today. So just again, a real quick reminder of what the options are. Option one is essentially replace at the same elevation. Option two is replace at a higher elevation. There's a difference between 2A and 2B simply where they touchdown on the southern limits. Or option three is no bridge replacement, but we would look to implement some traffic calming and measures along 10th Street North. Have shared this before. Hopefully it's somewhat helpful, just to try to understand all the different criteria we kind of looked at and, and whether it's a favorable, moderate or poor on these different options. But it really comes down to this question and really it's, does city commission want to reconstruct a bridge? Yes or no? And if so, is there a greater preference of option one, build at same elevation? Option two, build at a higher elevation? So that, that's really the first question that would probably need to be, to be answered. And then beyond that, if one of the build options is selected, how do we pay for it? You know, I presented two weeks ago that if, if city commission with or without Clay County participation said, yep, we are, we want to build a bridge, do it in 2026. Tom, figure out how to fund it. What we likely, likely be doing is, is proposing cuts to the CIP. That would be my method in which I would know how to fund the project. And depending on which option gets selected, again, with or without county participation kind of ranges in, in severity of impact to the CIP. So that, that is an option if, if a build option is selected. Another couple of options are, are, yeah, we support the, the building or reconstructing of the bridge, but we need time to figure out the funding and, and I think there's a few options there. We could keep it in the tip, programmed funds, ask MetroCog to, to keep it in the tip, just move it from 26 to 27. Or we could look to, to ask them to move it from 26 to 28. Or we could say we need a lot more time, remove it from the tip and, and work on other funding sources for 2029 or later. And that's really what I have for you tonight. Happy to, to help any. really what I have for you tonight. Happy to to help any, with any questions you might have.
Questions for Tom? Preferred motion? Do I have a motion?
So, Mr. Chair, if we make, I'm not ready for a motion yet, but I guess my my comments are, this is about connectivity. And and this is a very important bridge. It serves actually northwestern Minnesota. That's how they get to downtown Fargo and the Vets Hospital and all that. And it's not for just right now, it's for the future as well. And so, but the other thing I will add is, this isn't just should be Fargo residents paying for this bridge. This is Cass and Clay County, Moorhead, the state of Minnesota, the state of North Dakota. They should all be included because this isn't, this arterial, I mean, North Broadway, that's one of our main streets that we, that we assume, that we just take for granted in downtown Fargo. So I I think there's a lot more to it. I, my preference would be to give us more time because I, I do think we need to approach all these different entities, instead of just saying, just the Fargo residents have to pay for this bridge. That, that doesn't make sense to me. So that's my comments. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Strand?
I'm to a degree where Commissioner Pepcorn is. I just think this is an example in light of what we're talking about. The general public, my sense is they're going, you don't really need that necessarily for the cost that's going to bring to everybody, you know? And if we were flush with money and just had no concerns about budget issues and we weren't challenged like we are, I, I, but I, I just don't see the, the room to do this for three thousand cars a day. You know, if I remember, that's the traffic count. And 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 I, my sense is, we are, if our partners aren't willing to step up and deliver, the properties, the project's in jeopardy and probably not happening.
Mr. Colback?
Yeah, I, I agree. We need, we need more time. You know, I appreciate the community engagements and contacting residents in, in North Fargo and the feedback we got. Sixty percent of those respondents out of thirteen hundred that came back do not want to pay for this, right? And so until we have a funding model that is longer term, connected to the C I P long term, and we have other partners in the cost, I'm not ready to, to, to approve it.
Could the suggested motion move it to twenty eight to have consideration to get partners, to move the five point four million dollars into other projects, Tom? I don't, do I see that as an option?
Yes, one of the options was for us to request MetroCog. Also, ultimately, Policy Board would make that decision, but move the project from twenty six to twenty eight in the tip. We would ask to move twenty, Seventeenth Avenue South up a year from twenty twenty seven to twenty twenty six. And then, again, part of that motion would be for us to both work with Clay County to pursue alternative funding options, whether that's more participation from them or, you know, additional federal grants or something like that.
Does that free up your five point four million?
I've, here's how I think I recall that decision being made previously at the Policy Board, that if this project did not move forward, Seventeenth Avenue would be considered to move up a year. But the five point four million, at some point, if the project is delayed too much, the five point four million that's currently earmarked for this project would go back into the bucket for reallocation to the, you know, West Fargo Horace, City of Fargo.
So the motion you described, do I have one of the commissioners to make that motion?
Can I ask another question?
Sure.
Tom, remind me, if if we, we have to anyway, regardless, at some point, remote, remove the current bridge.
The current bridge is gone.
Is it completely gone?
Yes.
So that eight hundred and some thousand dollar cost estimate is, what was that for?
So, so if we, if we permanently remove the bridge, do not reconstruct, there are still improvements we would want to make to Ten Street for traffic calming efforts and things like that.
There's nothing to move, it's all gone now?
The bridge itself is gone. The road leading up to it on the south end still exists. We would want to remove that as well. So that's where those expenses are.
That's where that is, all right.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Preston?
So if you could review for us the discussion at Clay County and what is, in your mind, the possibility of additional funding in some corner, someplace that we would ever find?
So I have that hidden in here somewhere, too. If I can go to it, might help jog my memory. Again, Houston Engineering was there at that meeting. They presented the same, same information. There was a motion, failed two to three to approve the no build option. This was a type of comment I I feel I heard multiple times throughout that conversation. And that's why I jotted it down, you know, a statement of, it's really a bridge of convenience, not necessity. I would say that the county board seemed supportive of option one. Really, what I remember hearing from that is that it's a funding issue for them. For their, for the way that the project should be funded through agreement is just very burdensome to them, that that it's more, it's probably as much, if not more, of their county wide spending in infrastructure that would go to this one project. So to expect them to to increase their level of participation is probably not very likely.
How about federal grants?
That is something we could pursue if we had more time.
And the likelihood?
I, one of the benefits, for option one potential, it does have a BCA over one. And so that would be a requirement. I was looking at different grant opportunities. That's going to be a common requirement. And so there is probably a, some potential there for option one. I would say likely, nearly no potential for outside grants, federal grants for options two A or two B.
The other thing, speaking with Kevin Campbell, he did think there was another option via Minnesota to find a different way to fund it, but it's not their usual way. So that's when if we could work with them, it'd be working with them on different grant opportunities. Do I have a motion of something?
If you can put those up, I'll make the motion to move this. And if you can correct me to make sure if I make the motion the correct way. But to me, where you talk about moving this project to later on and moving Seventeenth Avenue South up, is that specific enough? Or do you need more?
It'd be the second one, Dave.
It, yeah, it's really whether, whether we want to ask to move this to twenty seven or to twenty eight to provide for that additional time. I don't, I don't know that I have a strong opinion of of which one is, is better.
But, Tom, Mr. Chair, if I can ask, I mean, if you say twenty eight, you can still move it up to twenty seven, and that just gives you a little bit more time. And just to add real quickly, I do think we need to, not only to talk to Clay County, but Cass County and North Dakota and Minnesota. And Minnesota has a lot different funding than North Dakota does. And so I do think we just need more time with all these different entities. I mean, I believe the city will participate some, but it seems like it's all on us. And that doesn't seem, that doesn't seem right. And so if we have more time, that, I don't, correct me if I'm wrong there, Tom.
So I, I think the easiest thing would probably be to request to move it to twenty twenty seven. It is, it's easier for us to kick the project back another year if we need to versus moving it to twenty eight and and trying to move it up a year. And so that'd be my, my recommendation there.
I want to do the first paragraph. Do I have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Strand?
It would behoove us right now to pull out all stops and see what, if any, federal grants we can. There's billions of dollars of infrastructure grants out there under the current administration. And and whatever, whatever it would take to see if uncover every rock, see what's under them, see what we can find that is out there that, you know, before, because that will change with a new administration perhaps, before we know it. But if if we could find the infrastructure grants and funding available to help adjunct this cost for us locally, my position's changed.
Mr. Chairman?
Are you done, Dave?
Yes.
Mr. Preston?
So I think this whole conversation is completely pertinent to the conversation we just had about the lack of funding long term for infrastructure and putting off projects or deciding not to do projects. So I, you know, I, I'm okay with delaying this, but ultimately, we've got to make some tough decisions about infrastructure and the funding and where the priorities are. And hopefully, that will be, even if it comes from federal grants, I'm sorry, it still is a major local obligation. So, you know, we got to make some tough decisions. This is one of them.
Any other, Tom?
Yeah, just to speak to that, one of the grant opportunities I was looking at today would require at least twenty percent local participation. So so there certainly would be a local share. If a motion is made to move this from twenty six to twenty seven in the tip, what would be helpful for me for those conversations and applying for grants is to know what the preferred option is, whether that's option one or option two A or two B, so that I know what level of funding we're looking at applying for and and be able to communicate that with Clay County as well for, for funding.
Can we finish this motion first?
Yes, sorry.
Okay. Any other discussion on this motion? It's to twenty seven, work with alternative funding sources, and going into Project Seventeenth Avenue as well.
So, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to explain my vote. I'm going to be voting.
You can vote and then say that, yeah. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
I'm going to vote against this because I don't believe in option one or two. So those won't be my choice. And because of that, I'm going to vote against this.
Can you clarify which option you would option for?
Three.
Which is no, no bridge?
Right.
Okay.
Traffic.
Just so the public knows. Can we proceed to vote? Is it okay? Commissioner Strand?
Clarification, I thought Commissioner Pepcorn said twenty twenty eight.
But, but then.
But giving room to move it earlier if it happened earlier, but.
Tom said it was easier to do twenty seven, he could move it back.
But, Mr. Chair, that's, John, that's, Tom said he preferred twenty seven.
But your motion was twenty twenty eight. And then I, I thought I heard if it moved up, that's doable in there.
Mr. Chair, Tom is twenty, from my perspective, you're the expert, but twenty eighth would be, twenty eight would be, give you more flexibility.
It, it does. The, the only concern I have there is that to move it up a year from, to to ask MetroCog to move it from twenty six to twenty eight, you had made a comment of maybe move it up to twenty seven. That likely wouldn't be an option, is what I'd say. If we're, if we're requesting them to move it from twenty six to twenty eight, twenty eight would be the earliest year.
So just for clarification, you want twenty eight or you want twenty seven?
I am fine with either one.
Either one, okay. Dave, what was your motion?
Honestly, I don't, I want to do what's easiest for Tom, but I think, I think twenty eight is better, just because it gives, I, I think this is complicated.
John, you seconded twenty eight?
I didn't second it, no.
Who did the second?
I did.
Colback? Is it okay, the twenty eighth?
Yes.
As you understand. So we'll be voting on moving it from twenty six to twenty eight and the rest, okay? Roll call vote, please.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Colback?
Aye.
Preston?
No.
Strand?
No.
Mahoney?
Aye. Second option, which option do you want? One, two, two A, two B, or C, or three, I guess. Can I have a motion to one of the options, please? Commissioner Colback?
I'm not comfortable deciding now what option until we have more information and background on funding sources and the longer term plan into twenty eight. I, I'm going to need more information before I'm, I'm comfortable voting for any particular option.
Commissioner Strand?
Mayor, I, I'm, I'm going to join with Commissioner Preston here. My view is, our partners need to know, they need to cough up some money or there won't be a bridge. They need to partner and let us know urgently if there's going to be hope for them to have a bridge to satisfy their side of the river and their, their people. That's where my head's at. If there isn't that coming forward from our, our neighbors and our other investors, I don't see a green light going forward from our perspective. And I, I'm, that's my reality is I'm, I'm not in favor of building this bridge until the money's there to talk to do it.
Mr. Chair, can I just?
The Clay County, just excuse me, Clay County's made it clear that the only option that they will try to get funding for is option one. They will not opt in two A, two B. So to your concern, if they're going to help us out, they will go with option one. And Tom would have to talk about funding sources for option one, not knowing what our commission has. It'd be hard if Tom went out and got for funding, came back to this commission, and we said, oh, no, we don't want option one. So I think that's what he's just wanting clarification. Commissioner Pepcorn?
So, Mr. Chair, even though I know Tom wants us to decide that, Tom doesn't always get what Tom wants. And so I, I think it just wouldn't be prudent at this time. I think eventually, we'll have more clarification about how things are looking. But even though Tom wants us to do that, I just don't think, at this, at this time, I don't think this would be a good time for that. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I think, Tom, we've answered that question.
So again, the only concern I have with not having a decision on a preferred option is how we pursue other funding sources. So if we are going to apply for federal grants, we need to know what type of bridge we're proposing. We, we can't, we can't go into that application and say, it might be this bridge and it might be this bridge. Part of the issue is that, you know, we did do a benefit cost analysis. Option two A and two B will not receive federal grants. It will not. It does not meet the benefit cost. So the only option we would have is option one if we choose to pursue federal grants. Now, if, if the goal is to, you know, work with the states and the counties, City Moorhead, to to try to fund this and not use federal grants, then it can be more wide open. But if if the goal is to pursue federal grants, there probably is only one option for build.
But, Mr. Chair, we, we have time. Like, what you're talking about, I, I know you have deadlines for some of that, but some, we've just talked about extending this to twenty eight. So we have time, Tom. So once again, I know you would like us to do that, but I just don't think, I, I, I don't think we should be doing that at this time.
A suggested motion might be to go option one if we apply for federal grants. Would that be something the commission could digest? Because he can't apply for federal grants if he doesn't know what we want, in fairness to engineering.
And and again, if, if, yeah, the, if the recommendation is pursue any potential federal grant opportunities, that direction would tell me that I can only apply for option one. If, if we want to have conversations on how we fund it utilizing something other than federal grants, then I can continue to look at options two A and two B. But just know that if, if federal grants is, is the way in which we're hoping to fund this project, option one is the only option.
Mr. Chair?
Colback?
So couldn't we look at all the options and funding sources for each, and then you come back with that information on what those options would look like, instead of picking one tonight without additional data and information on what the delay actually means?
Mr. Chairman?
I should call, Preston?
You know, we've got to make a decision. And option two, we're being told, federal grants is not an option there. So, and I'm going to argue here that option one should be a selection, when I believe option three ought to be. Option one, truly, if we're going to look for doing this as, with the least impact locally on the local taxpayer, option one should be the only option. And why can't we make that decision tonight?
Mr. Pepcorn?
So, Mr. Chair, it is not necessary for us to limit ourselves at this time. There's no reason. We have, we have time. We've gotten one step. That's all we need to do tonight. And the other thing, option one, that's laughable. The first thing I'm looking for in a bridge is, it goes over the water. It's not in the water. That's kind of one of my first things. And the number one is to build a bridge that gets flooded. And we're spending three billion dollars for a diversion, and we're going to build a bridge that's floods? That's, that's ridiculous. So I'm just saying, number one, that should be removed. That, that's borderlines on being dumb. To, the number one rule of a bridge, if you look it up in the dictionary, it goes over the water. So anyway, that's, but I'm just saying, tonight, we've made our call. Tom wants us to decide. We do not have to decide tonight. And we, frankly, we need, the other thing is, federal funding, that's not the only source of funding. There's lots of other things. And so why are we limiting ourselves? And so I, I would oppose anything tonight. We don't need to decide anything more tonight. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Tom, I do not have a motion for an option that they support, so we will not proceed any further on this discussion. Fifty three, recommendations for appointments to Board of Health to have a motion.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Colback?
Aye.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Preston?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Mahoney?
Aye. You have recommendations for appointment to the Metropolitan Council of Government's Policy Board. Is there? Aye. You have recommendations for appointment to the Metropolitan Council of Government's Policy Board, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Strand?
Yes.
Preston?
Aye.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Colback?
Aye.
Mahoney?
Aye. Please, on updates, long night, start with Pepcorn.
No update, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Preston.
I don't have anything.
No updates.
I have no update.
I will only tell you, we had an award ceremony this week with the police and fire and people that are instrumental in the July 14th happenings, and I think for all of us at the ceremony, it was a very moving ceremony. A lot of people did a lot of good and hard work. It's always an honor to sit in the crowd and watch the families and watch the people who serve us, but I think all of us as a Commission will thank them for their hard work and all they've done for us. And just remembering the work that's done day-to-day. Chief Turkson, you just talked about it, 65 runs in the last 24 hours with this icy roads, things going on, our people are out there taking care of things. And Ben, your crew got out and got the roads passable so people get to work and get to their families, things that they wanted to get to. So just a shout out to all the employees that make City of Fargo a wonderful place to live. Motion adjourned?
Second.
Adjourned.